Twice, there's two caps for safety.
Well, I can't, but it's safe to cap.
They're good though.
Welcome to the, I always look for my agenda to figure out what meeting it is. It's the fifteenth meeting of fiscal year 2014 of the Milton Planning Board. And I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And the other people at the table should take this opportunity to introduce themselves.
Emily Ennis, member.
Lee Clark, planning director.
Jean Peterson, clerk.
Jamie Lynch, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Well, Ed, I would like to recognize you for, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with your permission, I'd like to say a few words about the low count of many people in this room and around Joe Graziani. Joe passed away several days ago after a long battle with Parkinson's disease. His, some months ago, the selectmen issued a citation in honor of Joe, which exposed his many many woes in the town of Milton, that he had up to about seventy-five years of service, some service would be overlapping, some paid, some unpaid, and so forth. He was at one time the town treasurer. He left that position to go work in the state for some years to ensure the implementation of the provision, two and a half. Can you hear it? I'm sorry, we lost half of it, but that's okay. He was called back from town in Milton from being town, the two and a half administrator in the State House who came back to be the town accountant after being so many as his town treasurer. So, he was a wonderful friend to many of us. We were, um, some of us worked with Joe in a social club called the Blue Belt Tavern Society. And some of those people, who names you will know as fellow members of the Blue Belt Tavern Society would be Barbara Laurie, Joe Manning, Kevin Sorji, myself, and Ann Thompson. So, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A good man.
Oh, great guy, yeah.
Let me use your agenda again. We're now going to meet on the thirteenth of February. We're going to have a public hearing then on certain zoning articles. And I will, just briefly, a zoning article needs to have...
I can't. Sorry to bother you, but I can't write.
I was thinking that it had multiplied. A zoning article needs to have a planning board recommendation at the town meeting. And the planning board will recommend what it thinks the town meeting should do with the article. And sometimes the board will say, approve it. Sometimes it would say disapprove it. Sometimes it would say approve it, but before you approve it, make certain changes to address various concerns. And finally, in some instances, the planning board will recommend that the article be committed back to an appropriate board for further study. So, we are going to hold a hearing on the thirteenth on seven zoning articles.
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth, beginning at seven, on seven zoning articles. And the hearing is, well, it's going to be here in the Cronin Conference Room?
The Blute.
Here in the basement of Town Hall in the Blute Conference Room.
In order to take care of the crowd.
To take care of the crowds. And people wishing to try and influence the planning board as to what they recommend, or trying to just inform the planning board as to facts that the planning board should be aware of, or people who simply want to express their opinion for the planning board should come to the, should read the, acquaint themselves with the articles and come to the planning board and be heard.
Just one question, does the public have, they don't have a warrant yet, do they?
No. There will be an ad in The Times next week. The full text is going to be available online, how about?
It'll be on your website.
It'll be on our website, so that people can, uh, people can...
Maybe we should run a tour on the cable.
The ad?
Not the ad.
The web link.
The what?
We'll put the web link on, if you want to see that.
Okay, okay. Let's see if Mike, it's a lot of verbiage, but...
Right, it'd be easier to...
But people, people need to be aware that this hearing does not, does not do anything more than serve to give us a basis to make a recommendation to town meeting in May.
Right, it doesn't implement zoning.
It doesn't implement anything. In May, the town meeting, if they vote by two-thirds of the members present, they can adopt the zoning. The planning board can only make a recommendation.
But it does allow people, if they have concerns about the zoning, if they have questions, allows them to be answered. If they have concerns...
It allows them to possibly have us make a change in response to those concerns, depending on what they are. So, it's a good place to be.
But Alex, why rush it if it's, if it's the May, because of the time constraint?
The warrant committee has to formulate its recommendation, and it likes to have a planning board recommendation, if at all possible, so that they can print their recommendation in the warrant.
Because otherwise, the warrant prints something like, the warrant committee was unable to give a recommendation because we have not yet heard from the planning board. And town meeting tends to get extremely irritated. Yeah, exactly. You know that, you know that recommendation. So, in order to meet their printing deadlines, we have to have our recommendations in February.
And the other thing is that, as you remember, in October, there was a last minute, we discontinued a number of articles at the last minute because the hearing hadn't been more promptly scheduled on one particular article that I can think of. And this will make for a more orderly and probably good procedure. So, we look forward to the thirteenth.
Sounds good.
Bring a cup of coffee. Then we're meeting again on February...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
And we may continue if we have to.
We may continue the hearing if necessary. Okay, now we're at the citizen speak part of the meeting. And citizens who want to be heard on matters of importance, interest, significance, whatever, should feel free to use this opportunity to address the board. Any citizens want to...
Don't rush.
Order, order.
I think we can move on to the next agenda item, because we have no citizens ready to speak.
All right. I think that you correctly identified the fact that citizen speak is not going to occur tonight. Forty Antwerp Street.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Forty-one Antwerp Street, 262 Granite Avenue. This is a plan which we're going to hear about. Oh, here it is, right here.
Is it Mike?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
If you look at the plans on the window ledge, the orange triangle is the piece of land that's being swapped from Lot Two to Lot One.
It's parcel A.
It is parcel A, four hundred and twenty-three square feet.
And what is the swap?
It's been purchased by the, by the owner of Lot One, who is the applicant and owner, and Mr. Donovan is sitting here before you. I'm trying to do that in a rush because I have to leave to go to a separate hearing over at the Council on...
All right, well, you've done an excellent job, and I think we can probably manage without...
Good luck, Bill.
Although, missing the town planners' report for the second meeting in a row is...
Come back, come back if you're done.
Well, he says it's a swap. Are you swapping it for anything, or are you just buying it?
Cash. It is a financial...
It's a financial swap?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
That's fine.
Can I ask you to speak to the evening out?
Yeah, that's just taking that little, it's just making it a, I had an angle coming into my yard, he had an angle in his, we just...
Maybe they can show it back on the television again, because it's...
The fence just...
I don't know if they can hear us.
Well, you have a conforming lot, Lot One, whiteout Lot One.
This is yours, right, Ed?
Yes.
Right there. And a little...
Lot Two has a little extra piece in it, which...
Which allowed them to build a swimming pool, which was done seven years ago?
I did mine seven years ago, he did his, the Aquanis did this two years ago, I think.
It looks like the fence is already up, you just have to buy the land.
That's correct.
Well, this is, I would say, a, two conforming lots, both of which have frontage. The sort of, what we look for when we do a, an approved not required lot is look to see that there's frontage and adequate area, and you have both, I don't see that there is any setback problem. So, I think that the board should, without further ado, authorize Mr. Clark to execute this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll be happy to second it.
All right, do we have any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So, bring the plans.
The Marla, bring it into Mr. Clark, and he will, he will endorse it for the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Congratulations. I will.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
That worked fast?
That worked well. Now we have no public at all.
We have two sets of minutes, however. Do we want to go ahead and approve those?
I want to, I want to discuss them.
Ah, okay.
I think that the minutes of December twelfth, we have, they look, well, I think we've worked on these so many times that they look pretty good.
What?
Yes.
I'm sorry to reckon on you, but...
You've got something to add.
Fargam, I thought, it's been going on for several days, sorry. At the end of, bottom of page one, just add a sentence, please.
Bill?
Bill?
Henry wants to talk to you.
He said, "Go that way, Emily," and you said, "Come this way."
He's on track.
Live.
All right, I suggest we add a sentence at the bottom of page one. Mr. Duffy asked that citizens interested in pursuing a bed and breakfast should contact Mr. Clark.
That's true, he did ask that.
We can do that. Give it to, give it to Jean, and with that change, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As amended, so just give that to Jean, and we're set to go.
All right.
Now, I have a few changes on the next one.
Do you want to table them?
Let me just step, I, let me see that they're, let's give those to Jean, and let's try it again.
Okay, there you go, Jean. So, bring those up.
From January ninth?
To January...
Yes.
Can I raise an issue on that, Del, please?
Go.
Yeah.
The name of the street, the lanes to be called Mary Webster Lane, and that's understandable for a person who inspired the creation of the Milton Women's Club. However, I think having Webster and Webster, one's Webster Road, one is Webster Lane, in a state of confusion and emergency and so forth, they can get mixed up, no question about it with communications. I would ask perhaps the developer to come in with the change, that's just personal opinion. I think it would be better to have some change so that there's no confusion ever in an emergency situation.
I remember you brought that up, I think you brought that up, but I remember they actually said that they checked it with, I think, at least the fire department.
I sure am.
Yeah, and they thought there wouldn't be a problem, because it would be referred to not as Webster Lane, but as Mary Webster Lane.
So, communications...
I understand, I don't disagree with that.
Too many words. Too many words.
On Webster, having it twice, you know, there's two Milton Streets in Milton, believe it or not, but there's some other confusing, other confusion.
It's hard to believe. Where are they?
There's one that's...
Milton and...
One that was four houses in, off of Beale Street. Ninety-nine percent of it's Quincy, but it was four houses in Milton.
Ah.
See, I went to show over there in precinct seven.
Ah, you're coming out of admitting it now.
I just think it's worthy of a second look, that's all I'm saying, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since they did know that, we're still waiting for the...
The changes to be written up?
Well, I think I volunteered to write up the changes, but I was waiting for the, for the peer review.
Oh, right, that's a course, yeah.
The lateral peer review.
Yeah.
And so, if they're agreeable to changing, then we'll entertain that. But if they, if they, I think that if they don't, we'll...
Bring it up and see what they say.
I'll bring it up.
Thank you, that's all we can do. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, so we'll table the rest of it.
And that deals with our old business also.
Yes. That was sufficient. So, can I give you my one-minute master plan update?
Well, give us, you can...
And then we can move on to the HPP after that.
All right, well, give us a master plan update.
Okay, so we were supposed to have met, the master plan committee, others, we're supposed to have met Tuesday night, but we had the...
Snow.
Snow. So, we are meeting again a week from today, but I do want to repeat that our first public forum, because there have been a couple of questions about when the public are going to be able to participate, this, our first public forum will be March first.
March first.
So, put it all on your diaries and calendars.
And we'll have you have...
We will get more information out to you after our meeting next week.
We'll have you have them, will you?
It'll be at four.
It's March one, you said?
March one, yeah, but it's a Saturday. Same as last time, we are doing our kickoff meeting on, public forum on a Saturday morning. Got a lot of people out there.
We can't go live from there, you know, with the television, it will have to be taped.
Taped would be great, if you're willing to do that, that'd be excellent. So, and then we'll have a series of round tables and open houses after that, but that would be the prime kickoff one. And that's it?
And, well, tell us a little bit about, I mean, we have a kickoff.
Yes.
We have a consultant on board.
Yes.
Who is hopefully not just twiddling.
No, as a matter of fact, they have been going flat out this month, you know, the previous months, before Christmas, they were going through basic research, RLO plans, putting together the GRS, starting work on that. This month, they've actually been meeting with department heads, other people in town, a lot of one-on-one meetings, and we're going to report back to us on Tuesday.
And that Sean East met with the Chamber Congress, I was very, very persuasive.
Yes, he's a, he's a smart, well, they're all smart.
Yeah.
I met with them two weeks ago, and was really pleased at, you know, I walked in thinking, okay, I need to, we need to talk about deadlines, we need to talk about deliverables, we need to do this, this, and this, and the first thing that happens, I sat down, and they said, okay, we have an agenda, we'd like to talk to you about these deadlines and these deliverables and blah, 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 and what else did you want to talk about? I thought we covered it. So, they're on top of, they're absolutely on top of things. I have told them that the October 2014, which is not that far away, presentation to town meeting, the final report has to be done by them, that is non-negotiable, so, and they...
The final report is non-negotiable?
No, the fact that it has to be done by October 2014 is non-negotiable, and we are on track to do that, so...
Well, I think that non-negotiable deadlines often are non-negotiable, and sometimes they become negotiable.
We could talk about some other deadlines that are out there.
You say that there's going to be a forum, and the forum is, what is the purpose of that?
Oh, it's twofold, and that's actually partly what we would have discussed on Tuesday, so, not having discussed it, I can't give you the details, but a kickoff, public forum like this, it, we're going to have two things in there. One is, we are going to confirm the goals that we had come up with last time, so there'll be some new people coming in, people will have the chance to look at the goals, which are still online. So, we'll be confirming those, and then we're going to be moving forward, there will probably be some breakout sessions, I know we're going to be doing some mapping, because we didn't get a chance to meet on Tuesday, I don't have more specifics than that. Then there's going to be a series of topical round tables in March and April. The topics that are chosen will be based on what comes out of the public forum, but they'll be held in different parts of town, people will be welcome, we'll have them targeted, so, for example, I know there's going to be one that's going to involve business owners, so we'll send out targeted invitations to business owners, but members of the public are absolutely welcome to attend, just there'll be a focus on that. There'll be one that has some focus on open space and conservation, again, we'll target invitations to people, but the general public are welcome. Then in June, after the consultants have had a chance to take all this information back, we're going to do an open house, where we have some preliminary results up, this master plan committee members are going to be able, you know, to take stations and explain, and people can just drop by throughout the day, we'll have a way of recording feedback and comments and ways for people to participate. We'll do the draft plan, we'll present that in September, after everybody comes back. The consultants would like to attend, celebrate Milton, maybe have a booth there, and around that same time, they'll do the draft plan, we'll get feedback on that, finish up the plan for October.
Mr. Chairman, when do we vote? I think the planning board has to acquiesce to a certain extent, what...
Yes, the planning board has to accept the final plan, and I would expect that vote in October as the draft plan, probably right before we go to town meeting. But the one, one of the questions that the consultants had is, they would like to do some regular updates to the planning board.
Great idea.
So, obviously, the thirteenth's not going to work if we have our public hearings on the zoning, but I could schedule them for our second meeting in February.
I think the twenty-seventh would be a good time to, and we can...
Max, right?
February twenty-seventh.
Will they be ready with...
They'll be ready with, with just a preliminary report of what they've been doing, where they're going, and actually, that would be good, because that would be right before the March first forum, so they can give a lot of details about what specifically they'll be doing that I won't have for you guys tonight, because we don't get a chance to meet. So, okay, I'll have them come in on the twenty-seventh and report to the board. I believe there's a couple more times over the next few months, between now and September, that they'll come back and report their progress to this board.
All right, good.
All right.
Good, good, good. Now, the housing production plan, and the housing production plan, as we all know, is...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, item for all business, ninety feet of the road.
Right, we are not going to sign that decision.
We have nothing to sign.
Because, wait, I haven't seen the peer review report.
Okay.
So, the decision has been written, and we're going to ask about Mary Webster Road as well.
Okay.
Mary Webster Lane, see, I'm already getting confused.
He's closed. He wants what he thinks.
Mary Webster Lane, all right.
Who has the, who has the plan of the revised plan?
The revised plan is engineering, and...
It's a letter of writing for...
But, we're waiting for the peer review of the engineering. They want to make certain engineering changes, and we want to make sure that everyone's on board with the changes. And I gather that everyone is, but we're waiting for the peer reviewer to...
Comment, yeah.
To just say so. But, I mean, we can sign that on the...
Is she opining on the, on the latest changes of running the, running the gravity saw to...
I, my understanding at the last meeting was that the changes were basically agreeable to everyone.
Okay.
But, we're going to make sure that they're agreeable to everyone before we approve them.
Right. Makes sense.
Now, the housing production plan, it's a, a plan that the Department of Housing and Community Development filled out in order to try and spur the production of affordable housing. And they have a provision that if you have a housing production plan and produce half a percent of your total number of units in town as affordable housing in a given twelve-month period, that for the twelve months following that, new applications for comprehensive permits which are filed can be heard by the Board of Appeals, but the Board of Appeals, their decision would be, its decision would be final, and the result could not be appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. So, accordingly, if there is a, the one-year delay, and in the case of Milton, it would require that forty-six affordable units be produced in a one-year period...
Produced or designed?
Produced.
Do they have an occupancy permit?
As, no. It, actually, they're, they, they say if you, if they are pursuant to a comprehensive permit, it's when the comprehensive...
Oh, okay, so it's in the pipeline.
It's when the comprehensive permit becomes final. They have all kinds of different rules as to the date at which these units count. But forty-six units is a, a lot of units, and a year's delay in, for a developer in filing a comprehensive permit is not the end of the world for the developer, they can still go and ask for, to get a site eligibility letter, for instance, and be ready to file when the year is over. Of course, if, in the meantime, the town produces another forty-six affordable units, then there would be another year's delay. So, it's a, it is a plan that's designed to, to encourage the production of affordable housing, and it's something that the town should have, but it needs to be a plan which will direct growth in the town. In other words, to put stuff in this plan that the town doesn't really support is not, is not what it should be about. I mean, it needs to be a plan that a reader reads and says, this is how we should proceed. We're encouraged to proceed in a certain way. And part of it, part of what's needed is identifications of sites for comprehensive permit housing. And as I've discussed in the past, you can have a site such as the, such as 131 Elliot Street. 131 Elliot Street probably would be a good site for some comprehensive permit housing. Well, then, limits, and the limits are these. It obviously, the town parcel should be included, because having a development with a tooth taken out of it is, or with a, with a parcel taken out of it that shouldn't be taken out of it is not a good plan, but there also should be commercial in it, and since it's in the business zone, you can do this. It shouldn't be, I mean, currently, the, the plan that was... It shouldn't be, I mean, currently, the plan that was forwarded or suggested some months ago was all residential.
Right.
And it was a lot of all residential.
Seven stories?
It was about, it was 70 units or so. And it probably, that density was too great, and there really should be some business use. It should be mixed use, and this is all possible. But the plan should say so. I mean, the plan should say what sort of comprehensive permit development would be supported for a specific site.
So how do we get from where we are now with the draft to a complete, a completed HPP that the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board can vote on?
Well...
What are our steps?
I talked to the consultant, Karen Selenberg, who has done our draft, our draft plan based on the Affordable Housing Plan of a number of years ago. And Karen was not hired to go out and assess all the sites in town. I mean, she was hired to update the Affordable Housing Plan into a housing production plan. She's done it, but we do have this final step to take, which is to identify some sites suitable for comprehensive permit development. And Karen said that she would be happy to come in and talk to the board, that she said that in Needham, in their housing production plan, they added some guidelines which would help define what sort of development the town would support in, on a given site. And this is, of course, what we need. We need to see whether or not we can identify some sites that would be suitable for some sort of development, and then we should, yes.
We have one site. It seems to me that the Conleys had applied for a 40B. I haven't followed it.
At 131 Elliott Street.
131 Elliott Street. So that's in the pipeline now.
But the site there, I mean, if we were to identify a site there, we would have to say it is the entire site, the town parcel and the Conley parcel, because leaving out the town parcel...
Town parcel's only really square.
It's 7,000 square feet, and it's a critical 7,000 square feet since it has a lot of frontage on Central Avenue. And since it doesn't...
Is that the, is that where the garage is? Or is it the back lot?
It's the parking lot over which the new section of the ice cream factory was constructed.
A lot of frontage.
It's a lot, it is a lot of frontage. In any event, if a development under zoning cannot be achieved there, and the only reason it couldn't be achieved is that we can't figure out how to unite the town parcel with the Conley parcel, if there were a comprehensive permit development, you still would want the parcels to be united. I mean, to say that...
It would make more sense as a development to have them all together.
It isn't a good development without the town parcel, whether it's a comprehensive permit development or a subsection J development.
Steve Conley, I haven't talked to Steve in about a year, but he called me today, knowing that we're having a meeting tonight. He said, Bernie, today, I met with, I think he said it was the building inspector, Joe Pondak, plus someone that the town is hiring to run, to author the RFP, to write the RFP for the town. So that's how far along they are. And knowing that, what should we do, if anything?
Well, we're...
And this RFP was to advise the town what they had to do to tear their portion of the building down.
My own feeling is that tearing the building down, concentrating on tearing the building down is, would not be as productive as trying to get the town and the Conleys together so that we can proceed with a demolition by the Conleys and construction of a new development.
Can I say we're straying a little far from the path here because 131 Elliott is not on our agenda, and it wasn't, we weren't posted to be discussing it. We need to go, we need to move back.
We were talking about sites.
We need to move back to the HPP and stick it back.
Exactly. But I mean, but it is, wait, that does indicate, I mean, the HPP would have to say that these two sites would be suitable, would be suitable for a type of comprehensive permit development. It should be, have a business component, and the number of units should be limited in a certain way, and there should be open space, and it should be compatible with the...
Yes, so the HPP could identify criteria such as that, but identifying that one site alone is not going to help us finish the HPP.
Well, it's a good start.
It's going to help us a little bit.
It's a good start.
So the question is, how do we get to the point where we have identified sufficient parcels? And to disclose to you guys, I had a conversation with Katie Conlin. I made a suggestion to her, and then I sent the same suggestion to Alex and asked Ann Marie to forward it to Dennis. Well, they're at the Selectmen's discussion. They also did not meet Tuesday. And I am not wedded to this suggestion. It is one way forward, and I thought that if the Planning Board appointed to somebody, the Board of Selectmen appointed somebody, they got together with Bill and Alan Bishop to go through the available town sites. Mike pointed out at our last meeting that there's criteria in the original Affordable Housing Plan that we could use that to narrow down. These two people from the two boards could work together, come up with a list for both boards to review, and then we could move into, because there needs to be a public comment section on this, which hasn't happened yet, we can move into a public comment section and then get this done. I'm happy to have that modified, but we need to have a plan for getting this done because it's just hanging out there. I don't like plans hanging out there.
Well, I have...
I like them finished and usable.
I have always felt that it would be nice to have some of these planners who are working for us.
Yes, but unfortunately for us, the HPP is not in the scope of the master plan, so that leaves Karen.
It is sort of in the scope.
The HPP isn't. Some of it, some of it are...
Housing, affordable housing is an element of the master plan.
That is true. That is absolutely true, and the two documents should talk to each other, as it were. They should be compatible. But the trouble is, the HPP was originally on a much faster track than the master plan. So the question is, are we going to get it finished?
This is like the tortoise and the hare.
It really is.
But the tortoise is just about caught up.
The thing is, you know, we could take some of the stuff coming out of the master plan and put it into the HPP, but that delays the HPP even further. You know, there was, at one point, there was a timing impetus to get the HPP done. I don't know if that impetus has disappeared or if there's still, I get calls from people every now and then and say, hey, what's up with that HPP? Aren't you guys doing something about it? And I'm, you know, passing on, we need to do something about it.
You know, having a well-crafted HPP which actually helps steer development in the town in a way that the town supports is...
Much better than a rushed HPP. I agree.
Is much better than just throwing a lot of sites in and saying, this is fine, this is fine, this is fine, this is fine.
I agree, but I would like to be able to tell people who call up and say what's happening with the HPP. This is the plan.
Well, look, I think that, who, what is your suggestion for a person? Not what, who is your suggestion?
For the planning board?
Well, yes.
I'd be happy to do it.
I'll second that motion.
And you're like, yes, not me.
I think that you would then produce a list of...
A list and a map.
A list and a map, and maybe you could, maybe you could make some thoughts about what sort of development might be. In other words...
We could do that.
In other words, comprehensive permits don't have to be big apartment buildings. You can have as few as one house.
You can have a single house, yes.
The Habitat for Humanity often goes and gets a comprehensive permit for one single house on an undersized lot.
Yeah.
And then you go up from there. It can be two, it doesn't have to be 297 units. It can be anything in between.
I can...
I say 297 is, let's not, let's talk maybe 100 as the absolute maximum.
Something that a lot of people don't realize because they don't deal with comprehensive permits that much is that the comprehensive, the project that's receiving the comprehensive purpose permit does have to fit in with comparable building types in the area. So you couldn't put a 230-unit building when you're surrounded by single-family houses. You're not allowed to do that.
Well, except that's what they're proposing to do at Milton Mews.
Except they have Fuller Village across the street, which is multifamily, so they're using that typology, saying that because it's across the street, we can do it. That's their justification. That you couldn't put a seven-story building surrounded by two stories.
If you drive down Randolph, Randolph Street, which I guess becomes Canton Street in...
Randolph.
Randolph, you will see that this used to be a single-family housing development, and there is one of the biggest apartment buildings I've ever seen, including in New York.
That's pretty big. But the design guidelines only came in within the last few years. So my point is, there are some criteria that are already out there. There are more criteria, site-specific criteria, that I agree that we should be developing.
And we can, and as I say, Needham has developed some guidelines, and that is, I think, what we need to do.
So if you're willing for me to work on that, I know the Board of Selectmen doesn't meet again until the 4th, so they won't be able to appoint their person until then, and I don't know who it will be. But I'm happy to do it for the board's side, and then would report back to, probably, we're going to be full up on the 13th with our public hearing, so it'd be the 27th. I could report back to you.
You think?
Yeah. I can certainly report progress by the 27th.
Okay. I don't think a non-negotiable deadline at the 27th is necessary.
No, 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 non-negotiable deadlines. So, and as you say, sometimes non-negotiables get renegotiated, but I would certainly be able to report progress by the 27th.
All right.
That's acceptable to the board.
We're not going to vote on this, but we're going to, we're going to give you our blessing to proceed.
Yeah.
And then we will await your progress report, and...
See where we are from there.
We will...
Would I come back with my hair sticking out, say, I told you to do it!
We will give you a critique.
Sounds good.
So we'll be a member of the Board of Selectmen.
If they're willing to do it that way. But yes.
Or an appointee of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, they could, they could appoint an appointee, and I think Bill Clark is going to be your contact person also.
Yeah, and then we'll bring Alan Bishop in because he does the GIS, and we're going to need that for you, and we'll produce something for you.
All right. Well, I think that, I think that that, I think that is, now, the zoning articles, let's just briefly run through them. We're going to, there's a zoning article on medical marijuana...
Yes.
...facilities, and this would cite the medical marijuana facilities in the business district, and the procedure would be that an applicant would file an application for a special permit with the Planning Board and meet numerous conditions which are set out in the proposed zoning. Well, that would be medical marijuana. We have a proposed change to the cluster bylaw provision, and this would provide an incentive to developers to use the cluster bylaw provision. And the way the incentive would be, that there would be additional units...
More carrots than just one carrot?
There would be a...
Small bunch of carrots?
There would be a number of carrots.
A bunch of carrots.
There would be a number of carrots.
With the tacks on them.
There would be a number of carrots, but the bottom-line carrot is additional units according to a formula. And the formula would reduce the, the colorway, you take your zoning requirement and you see how many lots you can produce, and that's the number of lots you get in the cluster. The new proposal would reduce what the measuring zoning requirements are so that you could actually, with these reduced requirements, produce more units than under conventional zoning. And that number would be the number of units you could produce in a cluster, plus one for certain sites which have over 10 acres of non-wetland buildable land. So the cluster, the cluster bylaw changes are going to be heard. Then we have a provision regarding the penalty...
Yes.
...for continuing zoning violations. And the penalty would be increased. Where there is a zoning violation which continues for two weeks after it's been cited, then that constitutes a new violation. And then if it goes on for another two weeks, yet another violation. And this is directed at trying to get people not to say, well, I have a zoning violation. Why correct it? Because the only fine I'm going to get is for the violation itself. This simply gives the people a good incentive to cure the violation.
But there is a cap.
And it has a cap.
A million?
No, it's not a million. It's, it's in the thousands of dollars, but not in the...
But not in the tens of thousands.
In the tens of thousands of dollars.
And you've got your two citizen ones?
We have two citizens' articles.
The detached condominium residence development, otherwise known as the ACRD.
ZONB, yeah.
And the agricultural nursery landscaping development.
And the agricultural nursery landscaping development is an article which would apply to the landscaping business, which is being conducted by the Thayer Nursery. And in fact, this article is directed at legitimizing, legalizing that landscaping operation, and we're going to, I mean, it should be an interesting hearing. There are supporters and opponents. If there are problems with the landscaping operation, we'd want to know what they are just because, as I've pointed out earlier, if, if the zoning can be changed to address and cure problems, then it should be. Because simply saying, well, the Planning Board will fix all that at the, at the hearing on the application, it's easier for the Planning Board to do its job if the standards for doing its job are established. As you may recall, there have been times where the standards are not clear, and the board makes a decision not in accordance with... board makes a decision, not in accordance with any particular standard, but in accordance with its view of the situation. And the developer has said, you know, "You're going outside of the language of the zoning." So as much as possible, we do -- in the past, we've supported a good set of standards for -- to help direct our consideration on a special permit. The attached condominium residence development...
No, I'm sorry. On the agricultural, again, nursery. You mentioned that it's for the nursery. Spot zoning involved, you think?
Well, you may remember that Colther -- spot zoning, it's -- it is spot zoning, I think. And you remember that the Colher landscaping business, they said there was an argument that you have spot zoning, and it can be either be illegal spot zoning or legal spot zoning.
Yeah.
And so there is undoubtedly an issue, and we will...
A good question to bring up, is, you know, what public purpose does it serve? And that should be part of the discussion.
It would be interesting. Thank you, Bill.
All right. The attached condominium residence development would apply to certain property in the B, Residence B District, and it would permit the production of condominiums. Attached condominium developments. Attached condominiums, which would be townhouses, I guess, style of townhouse style. I guess you could have an apartment building with units in it also. And...
But do you have a good point in the purpose about the lack of this type of development? So this will be an interesting hearing.
I was a -- I don't remember exactly how many units this would permit on this -- on a particular site. I'm not sure that it says that.
It does have an affordable housing requirement.
It does, 10%.
10%, yeah. One unit per first 10,000 square feet of qualifying area, and up to one unit per 2,500 square feet of the remaining qualifying area.
So the first is one for 10,000?
Yeah.
And it's a minimum area of 35,000. So that's 25, that's 10, that would be 11 units on something less than acre.
Less than an acre?
Yeah, 35,000.
It has to have a minimum of two units per building, so they're obviously thinking of duplexes as a possibility or townhouses.
Yeah.
Maximum number of buildings allowed shall not exceed four per ACRD site. So this will be interesting.
Well, it is, as I say, this is a -- an article that is only applicable in the B District, and it is -- requires that there be access to a state highway at a stoplight, but I'm not sure exactly what that means.
So that brings up a question that we've asked before when these citizen articles come before us is, and we should ask it about the agricultural landscaping one as well just to make sure, is are there any other parcels in town that meet these definitions? And where are they? Because that, you know, as you know, when you start changing zoning, you sometimes get unintended consequences. We don't know.
I don't know where this particular parcel is.
Look where there's a spotlight, look where there's a signal lights. There couldn't be too many.
But it says access to a signal light, so I mean, you have a road that goes off a signal light, and then you have a road that goes into that.
Dump access.
I mean...
But you could have several different roads to your point.
Well, exactly. I mean, road, road, road.
Exactly. It still has access. I think we should ask that we get a list of where else -- where this actually applies because I think we could end up with a number of sites, and we should be aware.
Yes. Is this an overlay?
No, this is a special permit.
It's a permit, thank you.
A special permit applicable to the -- I mean, you could say it's an overlay, but it is applicable to the B District. And it is an overlay zoning in the sense that the B zoning doesn't go away, but that this zoning, if made applicable by a special permit, so I guess it's a...
So there'll be no change on the zoning map as such?
No.
Just words in the zoning?
No, it would not -- it would not be a...
Thank you.
A ARRD district.
I don't believe you mentioned your final article yet. Did you mention the table of contents one?
Ah, and then we're going to -- yes, there is a table of contents for the zoning bylaw, which we hope is going to help people find what they want in the zoning bylaw. And we are proposing to bifurcate the bylaw into the basic provisions, and then in appendix put all the special permit provisions, which basically reduces the size of the basic bylaw by about half.
Did you have a motion, Mr. Murphy?
No, I didn't.
You didn't have a motion? Oh.
But you might have one.
You might have a motion.
No, we're having fun.
I catch on now. Like Sean from Marvel Head. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry if some of the Joe Graziani statement was lost because of the audio problems. I'm sorry.
Why don't you do it again?
No, I don't think so. I think we lost some of it. Maybe next time.
On replay, we could, you know...
Okay. I'm going to read your, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And we quietly second it.
The shortest meeting of the fiscal year.